Like to call to order, please, the Board of Education meeting for Celine area schools for September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty P. M. If everyone could all please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, trustee, our secretary Jones and superintendent Dr. Lott are absent today for conferences and travel, and so we'd like to welcome Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources Kurt Ellis, and thank you for being here, we appreciate you. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, thirty minutes, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comments. The presiding officer is guided by the rules set forth in policy one-six-seven-point-three, which has been reprinted on the public comment form collected this evening. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. And we do have one, Lisa Slosson, taxpayer and former board member. Hello? If you'd like to just toggle that on, I know you probably remember this, but Brad, yeah, Brad's gonna help us out tonight.
Yeah, I'm gonna move the stool because I'm really tall, so.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
First of all, thank you for letting me speak. Once again, my name is Lisa Slosson. I consider myself definitely a friend of the district. I have been the school board president many times. I've been on this board for a really long time. I've been a PTA president, worked on bonds, done everything for this board, and chaired the policy committee, and refused to chair the finance committee. First of all, thank you to David in Kansas, excuse me, because I know how hard this job is, and I really appreciate your service. So, thank you. Thank you to the students who led the school board candidate forum. That's also a big job, so thank you to them. There's a lot of confusion in the town about the board's governance model, and I just wanted to clear that up for a minute. The board exists as a fiduciary duty. They don't serve the superintendent, they serve the taxpayers. Now, you only want to elect board members who care about kids, who do what's best for kids. If board members do what's best for kids, then they always do what's best for teachers and for the community and for the taxpayers. So, when you ask a board member, why am I here? It's to do what's best for kids, and I want you all to know that. I've been watching for the last couple of years, been busy, COVID, all that kind of stuff, work, but you all are doing a fantastic job. I'm really proud of this board. I'm really proud of how you care about marginalized students, how you want to make their lives better, how you know that your job is to be there for them, to make policies that are kind, that care about them, and that is the mark of a great board, and that's what you've all done, and I appreciate you, and sometimes it might seem like I'm not because I'm getting old and, you know, I'm kind of crusty, but, you know, I really do, and this community really appreciates you. So, thank you so much for caring about all kids, including, and most importantly, the marginalized kids who need you to speak for them. So, thank you very much.
Turn it off. Thank you for your feedback, Lisa. Seeing no other public comment forums, we will move to the agenda. To revisions or approval of the agenda, items may be removed, may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent or the assistant superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move to approve, McVeigh.
Michael, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing non-motion carries six-zero. Moving on to our student showcase, we have our middle school and elementary science Olympiad team. If you'd like to, please approach. I see some nice hardware there, excellent. Whenever you're ready, you can just toggle the green button on and go right ahead.
Thank you very much. You want to come stand next to me? Come on. Come on. Yeah, come right near either side of me, you'll get a chance to talk. Well, thank you very much for letting us come and share what is the best club in all of Celine, Science Olympiad. My name is John Spencer. I'm the head coach of the elementary science Olympiad team. It's called the Heritage Science Olympiad Team, but it's actually open to all second through fifth graders. We have, pre-COVID, around eighty kids participate. Post-COVID, we had forty or so, forty-five, so we'll get back to where we were. If you want to skip to the next slide, thank you. Oh, I've got the clicker, I totally failed. We compete in what's called the Washtenaw Elementary Science Olympiad, and that is a competition that takes place in the spring against all the other elementary schools in Washtenaw County. It is the largest elementary science Olympiad in the country, and at its peak, we were competing against two thousand or so other students. Last year was obviously a little smaller, but we're getting back, hopefully growing back to where we were before. The students compete in about twenty different events, they pick which two or three they like the most, and it covers a wide range of science topics, from human anatomy to ornithology, Feathered Friends, to engineering events. And I'm going to step aside and let my team here talk about their experience, start with your name, grade, what events you did, and then what was your favorite event and why? Sound good? Who wants to go first? All right, Liam, go.
So, hi, I'm Liam, I am the coach's son.
That's why he's going first.
I'm also in fifth grade, so it's going to be my last year in elementary science Olympiad. So, I've done three events so far in fourth grade. Well, my events were Pentathlon, Mystery Architecture, oh, what was the last one? Human Machine. One of my favorite, my favorite one was Pentathlon, because it allowed me to show my, my physical state and my mental state.
My name is Marchana, and I'm in fifth grade. Wait, do you say school?
I think you're all in the same school, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are your favorite events?
What was my favorite?
Which ones did you do?
I did the Write It, Build It, and Potions.
Potions, which one was your favorite?
The Write It, Build It, because there I got to, like, know, like, know some people and kind of made friends with two of them.
Make friends?
Yeah.
Awesome. Gabriel, you want to go next? Do you need the stool? Nope. Here, let me get this over here for you, bud. There you go. There we go.
I'm in third grade.
What events did you do? Do you remember?
Pentathlon, Read It, Build It, Zip.
Zip. What was your favorite?
Pentathlon.
I like Pentathlon. So, Pentathlon was a combination obstacle course math competition. So, they'd answer math question, do a physical activity, go to the next station, math question, physical activity, right?
Yep.
All right, thank you. And, last but not least?
My name is Lirial, and I'm in fifth grade, and the events I did were Write It, Build It, Pentathlon, and Zippity Doodah, and my favorite was Write It, Build It, because I got to meet a few, like, sort of new friends, and it was really fun, because it was like, the other team gave me instructions, the other part of my team gave me instructions, and I had to follow the instructions that the other people gave me. With my, with another person on my team, we were a team of four, including Marchana, and so, yeah.
Thank you. Our season is in the wintertime, it goes from roughly February till May. Our website is up on the slide if anyone's interested. Any questions for my kiddos before we pass it on to the middle school?
Questions or comments? I liked hearing about making friends.
Yes, that's a huge part of it.
Very nice. Any questions or comments? Of course, go ahead, Allison.
If I may ask, what is Zippity Doodah? Because it sounds really awesome.
Do you want to try explaining it, Lirial? You want me to explain it? I can explain it. So, we have a zip line between two posts, it's a fishing line, and the kids have to build a little cart that travels on the line and carries ping pong ball, right? A ping pong ball. And they're told a target time, so they have to adjust their build so it travels down the line and hits the target at the correct time, right? So, sometimes you have to slow it down, right? Sometimes you have to, sometimes you have to speed it up. Yeah, so it's called Zip, Zippity Doodah, right? And Write It, Build It is a really neat event. They've split up in pairs. One team writes instructions for how to build an object, and they give it to their teammates, and their teammates then have to recreate the object based on their instructions. So, it's a lot of communication skills and friend making, right? All right, well, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well, next slide.
Next person. For the middle school? Well, I can start talking. I'm Lisa Spencer. It's my fifth year as head coach of the middle school science Olympiad team. I have one son in high school doing science Olympiad, and then my youngest is in fifth grade. Basically, science Olympiad at the middle school level takes the elementary one and adds to it. So, we do twenty-three different events every week. We compete, we compete against each other, we learn our events. Thursday practices are student-led, so they are given activities to do related to their different topics. We play a lot of science games to learn more concepts about science, and then on Saturdays, we have a lot of parent and community volunteers that come in and help lead the events for the students. Our season will start actually this week, Thursday is our first, like, get-together meeting, so we can see what we're doing for this year. Then we will start practice and demonstration days on Saturday. So, our website is also on the slide, if anybody's interested, I encourage everybody to come. Our meeting will be Thursday, six-thirty, at G-one-oh-four at the middle school. We have a lot of exciting stuff planned this year. Last year, we did four or five competitions, including ones that were still virtual, so we were able to compete in Pennsylvania, plus we did U of M and Birmingham, and I think this year we'll probably add on whole, because they have a terrific and fun tournament to do. We usually have two teams. I've had three in the past, so I'm willing to do that if we have lots and lots of kids. The more, the better, in my book. My goal is just to get more kids interested in science and engineering, and to show them that it's still fun while they're learning. And the more kids that we have, the more participation, the more fun it is, and the better that they do. So, I've got three, well, four kids, Meyer. He's got his gold medals on from regionals, because he was really awesome. And then I've got my other three eighth-grade leaders, and the eighth graders have slides to do, so I will hand it over to you, Orin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Orin Singh, and I'm an eighth grader who participates in Celine Middle School Science Olympiad. Science Olympiad, as Coach Lisa said, is a club which expands students' knowledge about science and engineering, and I myself have gained from that experience. I've been doing science Olympiad for around five years now, this will be my fifth year, and I participated in five events this year, which ranged from space to building a Rube Goldberg. So, really, it's a broad selection of science events for you to do, and it's really augmented my school experience, because I can apply the things that I learned in science Olympiad to what I learned at school, and it's overall made my school learning a lot easier, and I've also made some terrific friends along the way, many of which are not here, but most of them are. But, yeah, so, I'd suggest science Olympiad to anybody that I meet who has time for it, because even if you aren't a fan of science, I mean, you can still do engineering, it's fun to mess around, and the whole purpose, despite all the competition and medals and stuff, is just to have fun. And science and engineering, like building a Rube Goldberg, that was fun. So, yeah, I'll pass it on to Cal.
Yeah, very fun, very stressful sometimes, but very fun. Let me get my notes up here. Hi, I'm Cal, I'm in, an eighth-grade student, and this will be my seventh year on the science Olympiad team. Overall, it's been an incredible experience. The practices really push me outside of what we can learn and do and build in school, and, you know, I'm able to study alongside peers who are really enthusiastic about science, which is awesome. Science Olympiad has let us be able to focus in on different topics, so, like, solving ciphers, which we came in first states in two thousand and twenty-one, at the three of us, plus, like, two other kids. So, like Orin mentioned, we've built Rube Goldberg machines, we've built a trebuchet, we've built bridges, both literally and metaphorically. And so, through loss of building and testing and studying, I've met some of my closest friends who are with me now, and it also inspired my sister's passion for lizards, hence the one on screen. I really hope to see the program grow in the coming years, so that many more students to come will have the wonderful experiences that I and my fellow science Olympiad kids have. So, without further ado, I am passing it on to Lorian.
Hi, my name is Lorian C. I'm an eighth grader, and this is my fifth year in science Olympiad. To me, science Olympiad is more than just an extracurricular. I get to learn about what's interesting and exciting to me. I get to see my hard work, my studying and building payoff. Most of all, I get to meet and hang out with so many different amazing people. Science Olympiad gives me a great opportunity to socialize and have fun with my friends while also achieving great things. These are my medals from the past year alone. On the slide, and I'm wearing them now. For years, I didn't win anything in science Olympiad. That's okay, science Olympiad is about learning, not winning. Last of all, I'd like to point out that none of this would be possible without coaches John and Lisa. I can't overstate how much of an amazing job they've done running this program. They provide us with the time and resources we need while creating a friendly and inviting atmosphere by being super encouraging and supportive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Yeah, Brad, go ahead.
So, first of all, I echo that, you do have the focus, right? Or educated the program, and why have you? The question I ask often of groups who come to visit us, or we, or we help you, or we assist you, or we, those types of things, and I'm obviously with a, and in, but, I'm in more of a community work.
The more community involvement that we have, the better. By running twenty-three different science events every Saturday, I need adults, not just for supervising, but because the students do better if they're shown materials. You don't have to be an expert at everything or anything, as long as you're willing to sit and work with the kids. We've done everything. Last year, we launched rockets, planes, cars, trebuchet, tennis balls, trajectory, I mean, we've built everything we can possibly build, bridges everywhere, sand, and we've done everything from human anatomy with brains and skeletons last year, and this year, we're switching to digestion and immunology, I think. And we have just an incredible need for more community involvement. The more we can get, the better the kids do, the better the program grows, and really, what I'd like to see is us to be passing Ann Arbor, basically. There's no reason, there's no reason we can't, the kids are super involved, but I, the more, the better. The more kids I have, the more adults I have, the more involvement, the better, so.
And also, I hear there's a bond proposal. That would be fantastic. That's something we really struggled with.
Launching planes and trying to get gym time is a struggle.
Finding space to practice was a real challenge, so the bond proposal would be helpful.
I have an incredible amount of equipment for the kids that we've built up over the years, and the more resources I have for them, the better they do and the better experience that they have. So, we need somewhat, somewhere to store it, somewhere to practice it, and the bond gives us that opportunity for steam building and steam resources.
And we appreciate you calling us up here to, you know, increase awareness for the program, because that's another thing we struggle with, is awareness, folks not knowing.
There's so much going on in Celine.
Yeah, which is a great thing to have, you know, all the opportunities, so.
But, science Olympiad is best.
Yes.
Just an idea, if you haven't already done it, Principal Chekowitz and Principal De Grand for, for both groups, and even, you know, I think you said you could go down to second grade, all of them have weekly communications, you could maybe talk with them about getting that awareness out, get some adult bodies to help you.
Yeah.
It's tough, I mean, everyone, everyone's schedules are really busy. Everyone's got a lot going on.
My middle school kids literally show up every Saturday. I have them every Saturday, basically from noon till five, sometimes six o'clock, and that's not doing competitions. Competition days go from eight in the morning till five or six at night, and I, I don't have an attendance problem, my kids show up, I mean, they are always there, because that's what they're, they want to be there, and I want to provide the top-level program so that that continues.
Can we hear from the seventh grader? Seventh, right? Just if, if he's comfortable introducing himself and how long he's been doing it?
Say your name and what event you're in, and how long you've been doing it.
Hi. I'm Meyer, I'm in seventh grade. Last year, I did, what is it?
Electric right stuff?
Electric right stuff.
Sounds, or waves, right?
Waves, mousetrap vehicle, and rockets.
Yeah, rockets. How long have you been doing science Olympiad?
Um, since third grade.
Another WISO alum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Meyer.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Allison?
You touched on this a little earlier, but I just wanted to re-elaborate. If the bond were to be passed in November, do you have any, or what would you want to come out of it specifically, if you have any idea?
Currently, I think as it's written, there's going to be steam additions to most of the buildings, so that there is basically space for us to practice and store equipment and give the kids somewhere, like, a home base, which is really what we're aiming for. The middle school kids obviously don't drive, so we kind of need it to be with the middle school, and the same with the elementary schools, so that we can pull them right after school, get them involved in it, and let them participate. It makes it easier on the parents, too, if they don't have to drive them all over the place and get them to different locations. If I get them right after school and we just can jump right in and start, it's all the better for everybody, so.
I will say robotics set a pretty similar thing, and I think it would, for me personally, I would, if the bond does get passed, I would just love to see, like, the science community at Celine or the steam community just be able to have fun over science together, and I would love for the board and to be able to support that, and I think the bond would be a really good way to do that.
That's a great thing about this community, is the steam clubs are very close and tight and work together.
Need a lot of the same equipment, and for it to be located in one spot and have it central would be key, so.
Well, I was going to say hi to Meyer, so I'm glad that he came up and spoke, so he was a part of my, my last crew here, and we made a lot of messes that were kind of science Olympiad-related in our PLTW classes, so, lessons, so I'm glad to see that he's involved in science Olympiad now. I really loved, I wanted to kind of circle back, Cal said that, I think it was Cal, maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, but someone said, someone from the middle school, or, middle school, high school?
No.
Middle school team, said that it's not always about winning, that it's about learning, and I just felt like that is something that we, we often say at our house, like, you learn, you, you win or you learn, and that there's no losing, and I, I just love that that's being embraced and articulated by the students, that the goal is to, to learn and to, and to grow their knowledge. I was, as each of the students was speaking, and as the Spencers, who, I'll just stop for just a second and say, we've known each other since our Woodland Meadows days, when our kids were there, and I just am always in awe of, of the work that you do for our community and for our kids, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know Mr. Spencer is a lawyer, so this isn't even, like, your area, right? So, so I think that also speaks to the fact that anybody, anybody regardless of your background, whether it's, whether it's in steam or law or something else, can.
Learning with the kids.
Learning right alongside the kids, and the thing that I, I was noting as all of you were speaking is the connection to the compass, and just how clearly that is articulated through each of those activities. Every point of the compass was very evident, from communication to creativity, to just being, like, just being overall innovative and, you know, forward-thinking, so I really appreciated that, and I'm, I'm thinking even more on the community involvement and, you know, thinking about how we might even be able, for all of our steam clubs, I think every time we have a group come and we say, what can we do, they mention community involvement. So, wondering if there's something more that we can do to, to make those opportunities more, I don't know, to make, to build awareness around those opportunities. And then the last thing I just wanted to ask to double-check, but I know you shared your websites, but if someone wanted, like, a quick stop to find you, is it through Community Ed or is it through something else?
It's posted everywhere.
It's posted everywhere?
Yeah, I mean.
If you just type in Celine Middle Science Olympiad, that's the first Google page, because I've used it enough now to make.
Okay.
Push it to the top, so that the kids will find it.
So, Celine Middle School Science Olympiad, and you'll, and you'll pop onto that, and then I'm sure there's a connection to the, to the heritage page from there, too.
And there's also links to our pages and information on the Celine.
Each school.
Each school website, okay. Okay, all right. I just, I, again, I think, I think that we oftentimes hear a lot about, you know, and my, I have a child included in that, we often hear about, you know, our athletes and maybe students who win, win the highest academic awards, and I think that in a club like this, the learning, learning being, being more important or equally as important as the winning, I think gives kids an opportunity to really accelerate, and I, when I think about the future, most often, well, more often than not, we're going to have kids who are entering fields that are. we're going to have kids who are entering fields that are related to science and technology and math and engineering. And so, I think giving them these opportunities to explore those fields so that they can, you know, find, find maybe their niche or the thing that they want to do long-term is really a benefit to them. So, thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, kids. Appreciate it. Moving on to our first scheduled report, bond proposal update. Anna Britnell and Miranda Owsley.
Good. Okay. We are going to give you a quick snapshot of where we are in the bond campaign. And hopefully, we'll do that the next two or three meetings as we, as we go through this timeline. So, we are smack dab in the middle of the September to November campaign period. A lot of things happening for the last three weeks, and we've all been involved in different ways. I'm just going to highlight a few of the things that have happened. We met with Rotary over at Brecken last week. That was a great group of a, a lot of people who are deeply rooted in Celine that had some thoughts and feedback that was super helpful to where we are and some things that we can do moving forward. The Chad Tough Race, we were able to provide them with 500 pieces of material to stuff in their packets for, for the race, which will be great to get that kind of reach at a huge community event. We met with a large group of high school athletic department stakeholders, coaches, athletic director, parents, boosters, anyone that was involved in those programs that wanted to come and see kind of the athletic highlights that are included. And they, we had a group of about 30 here at Liberty that were able to see some of those improvements, some renderings, and ask some questions. There's been a handful of individuals that have reached out to us with a long list of questions or concerns or feedback. And we actually are now just bringing them in to meet with them directly. So, there's been a variety of people from the community who just want to come in and have a, a, a load of questions. And we, we enjoy doing that because we get some perspective and we often learn from those, those conversations. And it helps us tweak our campaign a little bit. Our DPC group, our District Parent Council, has been phenomenal. We meet with them once a month. But then, those who are involved in DPC are often our go-to to help us spread the word or help us set activities or just get involved, and they've been really helpful. And then, as most of you have seen, our, our first mailer is out and people have it in their hands. And we've been getting a lot of positive feedback about that as well. So, that's what has happened. This is kind of a snapshot of the next two weeks. Then there's more beyond that as well. Next Friday, there's a health and wellness event at the Senior Center. It's about a three-hour block where they, seniors are welcome to come in and get their flu shot. We will have a table set up there. They get anywhere from 200 to 300 people through the hallway at that time. We are going to meet with the youth and middle school athletic groups, which is a little bit of a, a different stakeholder group. They've got a little bit longer future in the community on some of these facilities. We will be doing a little fun ice cream social over at Brecken with their, their whole group. And they'll be able to come down and have some ice cream and, and hear about the bond. Our STEAM group has a large meeting coming up. That's K-12 STEAM and, and those of, those who haven't presented in the last couple of weeks or, or haven't seen any of the rendings, renderings, they have an opportunity to come in and hear from us. Student group, we just arranged today with Principal Steger at the high school. We will be meeting with all voter-eligible seniors during Hornet Time in the middle of October. So, they will be able to come down. I know the League of Women Voters were, was in today to help register students. Then we're going to follow that up two or three weeks from now with an actual presentation and inform them about the bond so they can make an educated choice if they do choose to vote. In two weeks, we have scheduled a local business and Realtor breakfast. So, we are going, we are inviting any local business owner, Realtor, anyone in those lanes that want to come in and have breakfast with us and see a presentation. We, we did find that in some of our first couple stakeholder meetings that a lot of our community members feel that some of these projects can really enhance our community in general, bringing a lot of people to Celine. So, we know that that will have a, hopefully, positive impact on our business owners. So, we want to bring them in and really educate them on, on what this could look like if it were to pass. Mailer number two will be out soon. And then one more event that actually will happen at the Senior Center that we just finalized today. It is a partnership with the City of Celine and the Senior Center. And they're going to do a, kind of like a four-corner stroll that will have four different things. It will have the Celineary Schools Bond, where we will give information. It will have Celineary Schools Board of Ed candidates, which will receive an invitation soon. They will have a corner where they can meet people that are strolling. The City of Celine will have a corner for their millage proposal to inform voters. And then the other corner will be their council reps as well. Will have an opportunity who are, who are running for city councils so they can get it all in, in one big sweep. So, that's all in the next two weeks. As you can see, it's, it's loading up our calendars. And I think our central admin team are, they're tired of me sending them calendar invites for all of this, but hopefully, they won't regret it soon. Just a couple of quick reminders that are going out. We're really pushing this, reminding people that absentee ballots, ballots are available this week. So, to look for those if you are an absentee voter. And then, this is a big one. We are on the backside of the ballot. So, flip that ballot over. And so, you'll see a lot of this coming out in the next two, four, six weeks just to remind people whenever they decide to vote to, to flip that ballot over.
So, one thing in addition to that is if you vote on party lines, the same thing that will not translate over to the other side. So, if you're marking one thing on the first thing, you still need to flip it over and vote on the back as well. So, a little bit, just taking the time to go through the ballot language itself. There's some paragraphs in there, as you saw in that, the image there, with the very, very last question, and it almost takes up a whole page. This is not ballot language that we, Celine, choose ourselves. It's very legally prescribed and what it has to say. So, we've taken the time to try to boil it down, though, to what does that mean? So, this first paragraph, you'll see, it's a lot of legalese, but it basically boils down to how much? It's 180 million, and that is a maximum that the school is legally able to go out to bond for. So, this next piece is the same thing as a legalese of what can we spend the money on? So, if, if you read through this list, directing, furnishing, equipment, things like that, the same thing that's very prescribed to the application that we put in with the Michigan Department of Treasury. So, this next little statement here is basically telling us what will be collected in 2023, the very next tax cycle after this ballot proposal is out there. What would be collected for this specific tax? And it actually is here. There'd be no collected tax that goes towards this in that first year. This next piece is, is key on the fact that it's the maximum years that each series of this debt must be paid off. So, the, the schedules of the bond payoff and our debt will be, as each series, will be the maximum of 20 years that that has to be built to pay, repay those. This next piece, as you can see here, it talks about the 3.28 mils. And then, this is really where the language talks to be. If, if this was a standalone debt proposal in general and the school district had no other debt that we pay on, that would be the average mils that it would take to repay that as a standalone item. This piece is the first piece where it, you can really see that in the red highlighted item that you'll see it says 7.5 mils. And this is what the actual proposal would put, be the very following year. So, it's kind of one of those things where, that's why we tried to do a very good job of stating to people, it currently, you are paying eight mils, and this would change it to next year being 7.5. So, that's where that decrease from the current rate is stated. This next piece is just some other legalese of our current debt totals. And this is just a informational piece that kind of states what bonds dollars can be paid towards. So, what we can't spend on is teacher salaries, administrative costs, those things. And then, basically, at the very bottom, it's your choice. That's a breakdown. We, we plan to get this out in a more user-friendly way for our FAQ online. And we'll probably see some social media pushes that as well.
Okay, any questions? That was kind of a, a quick snippet of the timeline, where we are right now, what we've done, where we're going. And then the ballot piece is really important because as people start to read through that, we want them to be able to have the detail of what that means because it's pretty confusing for anyone that isn't Miranda.
That's true. Flip the ballot, that's for sure. Yeah, Susan, go ahead.
So, I have a couple of questions. So, are there going to, going to be any presentations that are open to everyone? So, not specific, selected, you know, but.
Interest areas.
Yes.
Sure.
So, is that planned for anybody to, to come in, like, that kind of forum?
Yeah, so we had, within the first week of the campaign and then two weeks ago, we had kind of a general focus group that was open. Not only did we invite everyone that was a part of original focus group, but then we also just put it out there to the general public. That was, that was sent out a couple of times of just anyone who wanted to come and learn more. Like I said, we're, we are having some one-off meetings. But if we need to plan another one of those in the future that is just very widely open to the community, we can do that as well.
And then, with, so I, I, I think I had asked someone about this, but if the board, because the board is able to say vote yes or vote no. You all are not. And you're providing great information. I appreciate, I'm seeing the signs up and everything, so that's super helpful. But we can go out and talk to our taxpayers, right? And have had people come ask us questions as well. Is there a packet or something that you can, like, like with business, with the cards or that we can have, like, on hand just in case questions come up? And we could say, hey, here's, you know, use your phone and, and get that QR code.
Yeah, if you step into my office after this meeting, there's like an archive of material and you could have your, your pick of anything. Thousands and thousands of all the things you just said, so come on over.
Okay.
But I will, I will make a packet for each of you.
I hope I've drawn interest, interest with the other board members, too, that they, they want to get the packet.
Yeah, we'll get you a packet together.
And then, one last question. Will the, so you're receiving feedback from the stakeholders? And I'm wondering, will that be shared with the board or when?
From what avenue? From what, from what kind of area that we're getting? I mean, all the stuff on social media, everyone can see for themselves. Some of the stuff that we receive on Let's Talk is all, it's an internal tool, but it's all, actually, what it does is it feeds our method for how we create our FAQs. Because if we start to see a theme and things that are being asked or questioned, we try to use that to frame what our FAQ should be. So, that's, those are kind of the two places where we're getting a lot of feedback. Some of them are direct emails, but.
Well, you, you had mentioned that talking to people, that you may shift, like, the campaign or, you know, what the, the focus is. So, I didn't know if that, like, playing into what you're doing moving forward or after, you know, if it passes? Kind of what you're collecting in that way?
Yeah, if it passes, it'll be a lot of fun to start communicating about it and, and where it goes from there. But I think some of the things we have heard.
If it passes, we have to prove it, too, so.
Some of the things that we've heard, just from the financial standpoint, I think Miranda and our entire team have started to really work through what this tax piece actually means because there are some complicated layers to it. And, and hearing, you know, how people are reading it versus what it actually means. So, that's something that we've really tried to hone in on the last five to seven days of trying to make sure that that is clear and, and it's understood by everyone who's making an educated vote.
I had a question. I was really impressed by the building-specific marketing and inclusion of parents and families within each building. And I know you have brochures for each building, too, so thank you. Can you give us a little bit of an update on how that's going and what activities have been occurring in the buildings?
Yeah, sure. I think our building principals are doing a great job of making sure that the bond board and all their materials are in a super-public place. I know as they have events, they often go out there, tidy it up, make sure they're fully supplied. They will contact me right away if they're short on any items, and we've been going out and refilling them as needed. I know that they will shift things based on where bigger events are in their building, which is super helpful in just trying to really place those, those materials in places, in, in areas where there's high traffic, depending on the evening or what they're doing. So, any event that we know is going to have good attendance, we try to work with building-level admin or one of us from the seven, the seven of us from the Capitol Projects will head over there to make sure that they are prepared.
I know that you have done remarkable work in getting the word out. I also want to draw your attention to the fact that we've got some remarkable community members who've done their own research and paid a lot of attention and have written recent op-ed pieces. For example, I'm not going to point out anyone in particular, but I would like to encourage, and I'd like to encourage you to encourage the, the, the community if they have really positive things to say or interesting insights to say, to, to, to post them on social media, share them with us through Let's Talk, and, you know, keep that action going. Because I've been really impressed with what I've been reading from the community members.
And you and Dr. Lodge are free to encourage people to encourage others to how they think and feel about the bond.
I've been encouraging a lot of people to encourage other people.
Perfect. We're on the same page.
Just a couple of things. One, one piece that, that came up, and so I'll just publicly say that the, the spelling of buses, B-U-S-E-S, and B-U-S-S-E-S are both acceptable.
Thank you, Jenny.
According to Webster's Dictionary. So, if anyone is reading anything carefully.
Maybe a few times, thank you.
It's, it's really great. So, I just wanted you to know that Inquiring Minds asked about that, and I looked it up because I am not an ELA major for nothing, so.
Perfect.
Right, so, so anyways.
You could have told me that like two weeks ago.
I'm so sorry. I just did the research this weekend after I saw the, the sign at the high school for the bus loop. And I was like, hmm. So, anyway, it was brought up in conversation. So, I just wanted to say publicly that both are acceptable according to the Webster's Dictionary. So, with that out of the way, I did want to say that when, when we're in an election cycle, and these bond proposals always come up during an election cycle, you know, we, we often have a lot of questions about, you know, budgetary items. And I think a couple of conversations that I've had, and I think that Miranda does an excellent job in her presentations to us, her finance presentations to us throughout the year with budget. But school budgets are very different than personal budgets. They're very different than business budgets. And so, when we are coming to the community and we are proposing a, a bond budget, it isn't because we have not been good stewards of the funds that we have been given from the state or from the federal government. It is the model by which our state has opted to fund school districts. And so, in, in, in allowing bonds to be on the ballot and, and getting support from our community has, that has been what has allowed us to excel as a, as a district and to continue to find avenues for students to find their passions and, and to, to extend our resources in the classroom. And it allows us, so, the, the other, the other piece of the budget conversation, and maybe Miranda, you can speak more on this, but the, there, there is a flow. So, the operating budget can go to pay for resources that might otherwise be funded by the budget. So, or by the bond. So, if we need new buses and we don't have, for example, a bond to pay for those things, it comes out of the money that we have in operations. So, that means less money is going directly into classrooms for students. Instead, it's going to pay for a roof or a bus, et cetera. However, the bond money cannot be used to pay for operations. So, the bond money cannot be used for teacher salaries, cannot be used for the daily operating expenses. So, I think there's been like some question about how that flow goes and how that could impact the expenditures related to whether the bond passes or not. So, I don't know if there's anything you want to say more about that, Miranda?
No, that's a great one.
Okay, so that was one thing that has come up. And then, the other piece is that regardless of, of the, the conversations that are happening around elections, as I started to say before, I am radically pro-kid. And this bond is providing for kids across the district and future. And it's providing in a way that we haven't had, in many ways, it's providing opportunities that we haven't had available to us before. As our Science Olympiad friends mentioned today, it's providing space that is a commodity in this district because we have so many active kids. It's providing an opportunity for clubs to meet in a variety of, of spaces that meet the needs of, of, of their clubs and organizations. And in, in this day and age, when STEAM and STEM is, is the thing that is highly sought after by, I would, I would, I would say, maybe the majority of our kids, there's never been a better opportunity or a better time for us to, to move forward with this. So, thank you for your work on this. And I am voting yes, and I am encouraging everyone that I know to vote yes and to be radically pro-kid alongside me, so, thanks. Thank you, Jenny. Yeah, Brett?
Well, that's not easy to follow up, but I'll try. I am radically pro-kid as well. And I very much am in favor of the bond. And, and some of the biggest things that, you know, Jenny's talking about, about doing things that are permitted and things are not. And so, like, for me, I see this bond as, as keeping us as being top-notch and cutting-edge at things. And so, when I think about Celine, you know, our, our young people who are here with us, all these medals they're wearing. And last week, when our robot, or two weeks ago, when our robotics team came to us, right? These are high-level programs. And so, we want to encourage those high-level things, right? So, that's STEAM. But then I think about like the athletic facilities. I don't want to, we've, we've gone on and on at these meetings about it. But now that people are voting, I mean, you're thinking about our middle school facilities, the track. I'm thinking about the fact of the matter is our baseball and softball teams get upgrades, right? So, those are all. So those are all still there. You know, there's stuff about cosmetology, senior center, adding space that some of our buildings desperately need due to crowding issues. You know, I think about high school operations and some of the things that we need to do from an update standpoint. So, you know, I, I, I'm telling you that these are all things that, you know, either one, keep us top-notch and cutting-edge, which is where we live and we want to be, and help us to alleviate some of those financial cons, you know, those financial pressures that we would need so that we can keep our financial focus on the classroom, right? And we spend, as we've seen in the last month, we've talked about, we spend our money on kids. We spend our money on our classroom. And, and so this bond allows us to keep doing that. And that's why I am emphatically pro-kid and I am emphatically pro yes on this as well.
Thanks, Brad.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, ladies. I, I believe we'll see you again in two weeks. Moving on to our second scheduled report, safety and security update, Rex Clary and Kurt Ellis. Oh, little ad.
As, as we're all transitioning up here, just one more quick thing about the bond and I'm not allowed to say yea or nay, but I will just say this. We, we walked through the middle school gym today, which is very, very close to nearing completion from work on our last bond. And, and it was just inspiring to me to know that that building was built 50 years ago. And the people that had the foresight to do that 50 years ago established a legacy that has lived far beyond their use. And, and I think it's incumbent upon us if we have the opportunity to do the same thing for the next 50 years for the students that are here to come. So that's my editorial comment without saying yea or nay. As far as safety and security update, I wanted to just give a brief overview and, and ask Jay and Rex to participate with you. We're going to focus on a few different areas here. Some of the procedural things that we've been doing since the start of the school year, some of the InformaCast updates that have been going on, some of the drill work we do that just is kind of standard, but is still really important in terms of the work that we've got going on, some assessment planning that we've got going on, continuing ongoing collaboration with Celine and Pittsfield Township Police Departments and then our Alice training. So from a procedural standpoint, Mr. Clary will talk a little bit.
Yes, good evening. So fire prevention, so classrooms and hallways has been a point of emphasis this year. Started off with our curriculum director, Cara Davis, leading the charge as far as educating our teachers as to what's allowable as far as percentage of wall coverings. Some classrooms, we've got a little out of a hand in the past, whether your, your classroom is sprinkled or not sprinkled, there is a percentage of wall coverings allowed by the fire marshal. What you're hanging from the ceiling, what you're hanging on the lights, what you're hanging from the sprinkler systems, very important to eliminate that kind of stuff. And then the hallways, if there's an exit sign above the door, the hallway has to stay clear and it's really been a point of emphasis by, at all buildings this year. We're resuming our pre-COVID annual drills, first response annual training. So we work, we have a great school nurse, as you all know, Karen Hervey. Even this morning, she was training my bus drivers along with myself on type-one diabetes in the response of low hypoglycemia. In a response, what we have to do to that as a bus driver or in the buildings. We have a significant amount and that training is so valuable to them. It gives them something in their toolbox to use in case of an emergency. Equipment checks, you know, every year we do fire suppression, fire alarms, elevators. We got seven of them in the district. We always check those fire extinguishers, all that kind of stuff as well. So really making sure everything's top-notch, up and working, buildings are monitored, making sure we're good to go for the school year.
Good evening. So just a quick update on our InformaCast installation. We finished up Pleasant Ridge earlier at the end of last year. The high school is about 90% complete right now. They're actually working on it as we speak. Last I looked, there are 251 devices that are currently online that have been installed at the high school for the InformaCast system. After that's done, our goal is to go to the middle school next and then move to Liberty and the rest of the buildings throughout the district to get that finished up. And one of the items that we really wanted to focus on with InformaCast on why this is a level up above just a normal PA announcement for a lockdown is it really brings in that visual cue that complements auditory messages. So in addition to just hearing the message go out, we also have signs and strobe lights that are going off, so those that may be hearing impaired have another cue. We have it going on the television, so we really try and get that message out to get them to safety. And then on the next actual slide, I have a couple of examples that I took earlier today, so I do ask you to forgive some of the lighting on there. My iPhone does not take pictures of LEDs while they're scrolling too well, but each one of those is a different example of some of the signage that we have throughout the high school that you can see or Pleasant Ridge when InformaCast is tripped, if there was an intruder, there would be a message scrolling across those or on that television screen in addition to the auditory message and the strobe lights going off.
Just in terms of those messages, I think it's important to note that, that we, we use plain English. We use a language that would be easy for somebody to understand, whether they're familiar with our systems of operation or not. We'll talk about Alice training in a second, but that's a county-wide training model. And so everybody that's from our area should be familiar with these terms when they're in our facilities. But the hope is that we write language that's so clear that if you're not familiar with them, you still have a sense of what's going on.
And one, and one more item about InformaCast is when Troy and I looked at that system in Byron Center, I'm going to say it was at least two years ago, what we're seeing now is that whole first line of sight. You're starting to see it at other incidents across the country where that line of sight, where all of our buildings right now have one lockdown button. This enables every teacher who's looking out a window that sees something can say something right away and activate it. Pleasant Ridge will be the first to have that and has that now, but that voice-over internet phone connection, they can trigger the lockdown line of sight, they see something in the parking lot that that's not right, they can react and it's, you're going to see more and more of that moving forward, that whole line of sight outside the building. What's outside the perimeter of the building? So that's going to be a point of emphasis with a lot of educational consultant, security education consultants as well. On our drills, we do five evacuations. I think this building's already done two already. Fire drills, we do two lockdown shelter-in-place. We might have a surprise in there coming up soon as to when we pull the next lockdown drill. Two severe, two severe weather, one in March, and of course, the cardiac health optional. That's our first response teams. Being a bus driver, we had a bus driver go down in the parking lot four or five years ago, it was before, and our team responded well, but since then, we've started to practice because the first response teams are building-operated, they're not in the buildings at 6:30 in the morning or 7:00 AM, which was when this accident happened. So we've started to do that as well with our own first response team and how we respond to e-medical emergencies as well. And again, Karen Hervey does a great job.
Those, those cardiac and health emergency drills, not only are we drilling on that, that is actually something that happens on a fairly regular basis when you think about 5,000-ish students and another 600 or so employees. We do have medical emergencies and, and I think do a, do a nice job handling those. In terms of, of our safety and security, we also just applied for and will be receiving another grant from the state of Michigan State Police to have our Secure Education Consultants come back to the district and do assessments. And that's scheduled to happen October 12th, 13th, and 14th. And so when they come to Celine here, they're going to review all the emergency equipment that we have in place. And, and so they've helped us design the entrances, but they are not familiar necessarily with our installation of InformaCast. So that'll be something they'll take a look at. They'll review all of our related policies and procedures. They'll conduct onsite interviews with both the building administrators as well as some of the people that are involved in the practice of these activities. And then they'll issue us a district-wide findings report that will be a guide for us to make future changes with. The other thing that we will get out of this, out of this grant is we're going to create 700, and I forgot the thing that's sitting on my desk, 700 of these, these emergency guides, and those will be placed in the common spaces and classrooms throughout the district. I think that, again, we are trying to set systems in place where if Mrs. Miller is in her classroom and there's an emergency, that class gets handled very well, but if there's a substitute in there, those students deserve the same level of safety and security. We want to make sure that we have resources in place so that everybody in those spaces can help us succeed. In terms of ongoing collaboration, we continue to work with both Celine and Pittsfield Police Departments and Jay can talk a little bit about a meeting we had today.
So one of the items that has come up in our discussions was in regards to access for the police departments to have access to our cameras throughout the district. We want to work with them in developing policies and collaborating with them so that they have a view-only access if they need to log into our cameras that they can access from the outside. That can help them if there's an investigation going on to see something as it's happening. So we really do believe that working with them, that that will really be very helpful. I know other districts around the, the county are working with their police department where they have this access into the camera system. So it has been something that's been on the plate that we wanted to bring forward and we're, we are working on this access, where they would still have password-protected access to get in and like I said, view only as they needed to, see it live.
The other thing that we're doing with both of those departments, and we're going to spend our October agenda on this, is planning a joint training exercise that will involve Celine, Pittsfield, as well as the school district. And this will be a larger-scale event than what we've done in terms of some of our routine drills. If there were to be, God forbid, some type of an emergency situation, likely is that it's going to draw multiple jurisdictions or multiple agencies. And so we want to give them the opportunity to practice their communication skills as well as, as communicating with us onsite. So we will be planning that. Because of the nature of those types of things, we will also communicate that very, very well in advance, so there are no surprises. The last thing in the world we would want is for a bunch of police vehicles to be rolling into a, to a building and people not to know why that's happening. So we'll keep you informed on that, but that will be a great learning opportunity, I think, for everybody in terms of what we look like going forward. The last piece I want to touch on is Alice training. We've been engaged in Alice training now for probably seven or eight years. And Alice stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And, and, and I think sometimes people think about that in terms of a, of a procedural thing. I do Alice or I do Alert before I lockdown, before I inform, and it's not. It's a suite of, of options, if you will. And what we really want to prepare people for are to give them the skills and, and confidence necessary to make informed decisions in the event of a, a crisis situation. And that crisis situation doesn't have to be an active shooter, it can be a weather situation, it could be a fire. You should know where your exits are, those types of things. And, and again, the hope is that we provide people with the skills that don't only just help them here at school, but can also help them when they're on their own outside of school. And so we were going to, or we are going to have that training for our new hires. We did everybody last year, we did over 600 Alice trainings last year and we're going to have a session for our new hires here in October. So any questions for us?
I do have a brief question. So the five evacuations and the two lockdowns that we had, are those the, the number that are required by the state?
They are.
We're not going above and beyond or anything like that?
We, we have gone above and beyond, but that is what the minimum requirement is, yes.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things. So number one, you've got my attention on this line of sight training, right? Or this line of sight opportunity for, for our staff, where our staff on one can push a button and make everybody alert. What type of training are we offering to support our staff about what's appropriate, when to use it, how to use it, all of those kinds of things? So that'll be my first question, if you don't mind answering.
Tag-team that, I'll, I'll say this. If, if you're over the age of 25, you probably grew up in an area where you, or era where you remember buttons in classrooms and you were told, don't ever touch those buttons, no matter what, don't touch those buttons. And, and, and we've all grown up in that mindset and the mentality, the same thing with those red fire alarms on the wall, like the one in the corner over there. And, and so what we've really tried to do is to just change that paradigm entirely to say, we want people to have the access to do this. If we make a mistake and we evacuate, that's fine, we'll, we'll deal with the aftermath of that. We don't want to get into a situation where we don't. And so when we do some of these drills, we'll literally go in there and we have to introduce ourselves because people that work at Liberty aren't necessarily familiar with students at all the buildings, but we need to go in and introduce ourselves and we say, will you please go over there and pull that fire alarm? And you should see the look on the kids' faces, it's shocking. But, but the alarm goes off. And, and so there's an element of realism to that. In terms of staff, we do provide them not only with some training, but also just, I think a lot of our phones have a sticker on them that talks about what the code is to do an all-call in that building. And again, the thought being if, if we make a mistake and we, we shut down erroneously, then, then we'll deal with that, but we want people to feel empowered to do that.
Just to add to that, that during the staff PDs at the beginning of the year, this was brought up as part of the training where I was in front of them going over the phone system and how to use that incorporation with the InformaCast, how to set that off and trigger that. So there is training, we've also have literature that we've sent out to the staff to give them reminders on, you know, if you see that, what to press, how to set that off.
Okay. And then I guess the next question I have is, and thank you, by the way. October 13th and 14th, you talked about that safety review. I see that kind of like an audit, right? Like we do that for financial reasons and it's a good thing for us to do it from a safety standpoint. You said that's grant-provided, right? So number one, how long is that grant? And number two, is this written into, I'm not recalling it, is it written into our plan that we're going to continue to do this even when it's not provided by a grant? Because I, I just think it's a really good idea.
Yeah. So the grant is specific to this year and, and the actual deadline is coming up here real quickly. We've already submitted our materials, but the deadline's in, in late October. And so like I said, Jason Russell from Secure Education Consultants and his group will come down and conduct those interviews. I do think it is best practice to go forward that we conduct something like this. The, the amount of money that's allocated through the grant for this, it's $2,000 per school building, and so in, in the grand scheme of things, you're right, it's, it's nothing. And, and going back to our bond conversation, this is an operating expense, not a bond expense, so we would have to take this out of operating dollars. But going forward, I think that would be a, a good practice, if not every year, certainly every other.
The, the last thing is just a, a thought. I applaud the October training exercise, that we're coming together with law enforcement around us, that we're working together, because I agree with you, talking about having common language, having common preparation, I think, I, I never want it to happen ever anywhere near here, but it just makes me feel safer as a, as a dad, as a board trustee in, in a lot of ways, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Oh yeah, Susan, go ahead.
Just real quick, I do not believe we received this presentation in advance, so if you can send that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
So I was just, I was looking it up because, not to steal anyone's thunder, I, I'm sure we'll hear about this later, but there is policy around reviewing safety plans by annually, by the district, but also now annually. It's going to be written in, well, hopefully, it will be, it's proposed that it's written in that the board will annually review this, so, so that's good. But as I was listening to the presentation tonight, the, I was connecting it to some professional development that I was in last week where the presenter said that the learning happens in reflection. And as I was listening to the pieces like the change from code language, like when we used to say like, "blue hornet," whatever it was. And, you know, if you were on staff and you were a regular employee, you knew that that meant lockdown, but now we know that lockdown means lockdown. And so I, I think that that is an example of reflection and learning. I also just really am thinking about the, the pieces around InformaCast that are allowing access to, you know, all abilities and all levels of, of, of students and staff so that everyone can be informed of, of what's happening in the district is, is important, and I think that's a, a key piece of reflection. And then again, as you were talking, I was thinking about an event that happened this weekend that was, that was, I guess it was planned and, and executed by a, a family in the district who had a cardiac event in one of our schools. And I was in the building that day and, and the team, because of Karen Hervey and her foresight, was equipped and was able to respond to that and potentially saved, saved his life. So I just think about the work that you're doing and how we've reflected on, we are constantly, you are all constantly reflecting on what is happening and how it can be even better moving forward. So I applaud your efforts in seeking out grant opportunities and moving forward in best practice.
Thank you. One of, you touched on a really key concept that I should have mentioned in this is when we do have these events, one of the first things that we do when they're done is to debrief. And, and I'll give you a very specific example that occurred not too long ago. There was a shooting at Walmart a few weeks ago and there were some people that were in the district, there were some people that were out of the district. And, and I was in the middle of an interview and by the time I walked out of the interview, there were about eight people standing in an office and we were already locking things down and, and, and everything happened that was supposed to happen. But, but when we sat down afterward to review it, we identified two or three things that we could have and should have done better. And so we were able to learn from that and continually will do so.
All right, thank you so much. This is incredibly important and I, I know what, what power you put into this, so thank you, thank you very much. Brad's right, we don't want anything to happen. Moving on to our only discussion item for this evening, Vice President McF-
Um, moving on to our only discussion item for this evening, um, Vice President McFay, Policy Committee update.
Thank you. The um, the motto of the Policy Committee should be, "We review policies so you don't have to." But you really should, yeah. Anyway, so here we go. Uh, we're gonna recommend, we, we, we looked at a number, uh, I think we got up to nine this evening, policies. Some of which are going to be discussed uh, at the next meeting, we'll put on the consent agenda. One which we're going, going to discuss this evening very briefly, one would hope. And there's uh, uh, the three members of the Policy Committee, trustees, E Step and Miller, are going to be doing some additional research before we can move on the next one in a month. So here we go. Um, number one, I'd like to thank uh, Brian Puffer for the um, uh, community education updates he's made to policy seven, five, one, zero regarding permits and so forth and permissions to use the buildings. He went through it with a fine-tooth comb and we made just a couple of slight changes and it's uh, going to be put on the consent agenda, so do take time to take a peek at that. Uh, in addition, we, let's see, that's a minor thing. Oh, uh, policy eight, four, zero, two. Now you took the wind right out of my sails on that one. Uh, the emergency operations plan, we uh, would like to recommend and put on the consent agenda to add one additional line. And that is that we will do an annual review. Um, we, we didn't mess around with the dates and times. Apparently, Dr. Lott has already put it on the, the calendar for the, for the district, so we're happy with that. It's not a requirement, but it's something that we think as a board, we really do wanna be on top of. Because people do ask us uh, questions about how, if, if we are secure and if we have plans. And without giving away any of the, the important information that needs to be in closed session only, we will keep reviewing that policy. Number four, I think, pardon? Oh, I think that was it. We have issues regarding, just if you're interested, uh, uh, vendor relations, the Fair Labor Standards Act. Uh, Jenny Miller and Susan E Step will dig into that one. Um, I'm delighted to report that small unmanned aircraft systems, we don't even have to talk about because, no, no change. Um, we're also looking into flags and displays, which is policy eight, eight, zero, five, if you're following along in our playbook. And uh, nine, one, five, zero on school visitors. I'm gonna be reviewing that language with um, our Neola group. And there are a couple of other things as well, but m- m- minor. The issue that we really have to talk about tonight uh, is a, a change to policy zero, one, four, four point one. It's compensation, compensation for board members. Right now, I don't know if members of the community know actually how much we're, we're paid um, to, to, to serve for these meetings, but it is the amount of thirty dollars. We actually have to state that now in our policy, which is fine. But an interesting thing came up as we were reviewing the policy. There was a, a note in brackets that said, "We receive thirty dollars per meeting, including committee meetings", at which point we thought, "Oh, we didn't, we haven't been getting paid for those", uh, which is, which is fine, which leads us to the important questions. So I'm gonna ask three, I'm gonna put three uh, issues out, or three different scenarios out to you. One is that we just leave this whole thing alone and carry on the way we have been doing it in the past. Number two, we start including finance committee and policy committee uh, meetings and, you know, uh, getting some sort of a, a compensation for those. Or do we include any and all meetings that are formally listed on our list of meetings that we attend? Now, there, there is a caveat, there is a maximum of fifty-two meetings uh, that we can receive reimbursement for. Right now, just board meetings alone, I think it comes to, what is it, twenty-one? Yeah, twenty-one meetings. So, uh, I'd like to open up to, am I allowed to do that? Yeah, I think as a...
It's just a discussion, right?
Just a discussion, we're not voting, we're not doing anything like that. But I'd just like to open it up as a general discussion to see where, where you are, where the rest of the board feels about this thirty dollars a meeting, uh, leave it, add financial and policy, or, or take it to the max.
I was just... Susan and Jenny, why don't, since you're part of the committee, if you have any other details before we give our thoughts, that might be good. So I guess it's detail, it was discussed, it was discussed at our policy meeting, so anybody who was there heard that. But um, just to bring it to the board and to, to this meeting, um, I, I um, I think that, that, you know, especially, we just were talking about budget, that we have always, um, it's been our goal to put as many dollars into the classroom as possible. And in taking more payment, that would come from that general operation, that general operations budget. And so I am in favor of keeping it the way it is currently because um, because I wouldn't want to take more from the budget that's meant for students. But I'm open to discussion if others are interested in um, in, in discussing that further. I kinda feel like those other, that, well, actually the whole role, but um, that we're not in it for the, for the money. We're in it uh, for civic duty and our commitment to kids, so.
Um, and one thing that was uh, brought up as well, I believe trustee Miller um, mentioned during our meeting was um, equitable as well. So if you have, you know, the president assigns, um, assigns someone to like ten committees, but then another, well, the next president, um, and the next, um, you know, uh, person, or the other person gets like, you know, three committees or whatever. So that was just something to, to consider as well if we, you know, did the payment across like all committees or just board committees and stuff.
Um, I actually have feelings on this one, pretty strong feelings, but David or Brad, do you wanna go? Okay, um, I, I totally agree with Jenny. I, I, you know, we don't do it for the money. I, I don't even take the, the thirty dollars per meeting for the board meeting. So I think it should be in the classroom um, or with the Foundation for Salinity Schools or um, to help our staff, uh, which help our, helps our students. So I would be strongly in favor of, of keeping it the same.
I, I think I agree with that. I think we can probably all agree with that statement, we don't do this for the money.
Yeah, I, I think I'm gonna make this a unanimous thing. Uh, I've never once thought about the thirty dollars. I don't think about the thirty dollars, like we just do the, the work of the kids, work of our community. And uh, so I'm certainly not in favor of having to carry maximum reimbursements and all of that. And I, I, I think what we're doing works just fine, so, but that's where I'm gonna land.
Well, I appreciate that. And if I can chime in as well, oh, uh, oh.
I did. You already spoke, no, kidding. Uh, so I guess to be clear as well, um, you know, not just these meetings. So for example, last year during the search, um, it was a board, you know, board meeting. Um, I believe we got paid for those. Um, and then also like emergency meetings, that kind of thing. So meetings that are posted on the board, um, or for the board, for the, the full board, um, we do get the, the stipend or thirty dollars for. So just, it's not just these meetings, so just to be clear about that piece too.
Um, I shocked a few people on the Policy Committee this evening by pointing out that in, uh, just in a few places that I knew about personally, LAUSD and DeKalb County in Georgia, they, the board members receive as much as thirty thousand dollars a year. It's a, it's a career choice, um. So we're not, we're, we're civil, we're public servants, we're not in it for the, and I appreciate your comments earlier. Uh, Citizen Slosson for, yeah, we're, we're here for the kids. I just wanted to add also, I did the arithmetic once. Um, I looked at the, the amount we, we give in special, special gifts and to the, to the, to the, the kids that come to the door asking for money for, for track and field or for wrestling and for whatever, it all goes right back to them. It, it, at least, at least my bit of stipend does. So um, I think, I think we do end up serving the community with this stipend. It's a, but we get to tell where the money goes, but anyway. Uh, so I, I still think we need to take this to a, a quick vote next week. Uh, we have, give us a week to think about this. Also, I'd like to include Candace uh, in, in this conversation.
And any, any policy, our, our policy on creating policy says that we have to have this at two meetings. So we wanted to bring this today so that we could start the conversation, so that we're potentially ready for a vote at a future meeting.
I actually had a clarifying question, so thanks for bringing that up. So Michael, you mentioned that there were several consent agenda policies coming next time. So are those Neola updates that would go on as um, consent? Or do those need um, first and second review?
Uh, they are, there's nothing that needs review at this point, except this one item. Uh, there... The ones that are, the ones that are going on the consent agenda, uh, they, they are minor issues. They're nothing that's major, majorly debatable. But again, we can always remove any item as you've, as you review it over the next two weeks. You can always pull an item out and we can put it up for discussion.
Well, and just as a point of clarification too, they are Neola updates, except for one, which was an update from Community Ed and how that procedure to reserve per um, space, rental space, happens.
We do that one in two then?
It's, it's just basically saying that instead of filling out a paper permit, that you need to go and fill it out online.
Right.
It's procedural, it's not, I mean, we could bring it to discussion. If you'd like to pull it from consent agenda to the discussion, we can definitely do that. But you can like take a look at it ahead of that.
I just, I just wanna make sure we're legally compliant with our policy on policy, right? That way also later on, we don't have to then say, you know, we have to pull it out and do it again and now we negate good work that was done by a team, so I guess that would be the thing I'd wanna be mindful of.
Right, well, your, your colleagues on the, on the uh, Policy Committee uh, looked at it and thought that it, these items that are going on the consent agenda should, should really go on the consent agenda. If there's anything beyond that, in fact, there are five issues that we don't wanna move on at all until we do our homework. And some of these may show up in future board meetings for, for discussion and vote as changing the policies.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
All right. All right, thanks team. Uh, moving on to administration updates, Assistant Superintendent Alice.
Sure, Superintendent Lott said about fifteen, twenty minutes to, to talk to you here tonight. So I'll take about thirty-five seconds. I do have just three real quick thank yous. Number one, at the risk of being redundant, I wanna make sure I thank our Transportation and Grounds Department. Some combination of our office staff and grounds crew are driving every day to make sure that our kids get to school. And so uh, it, it happens before and after school when people's minds are elsewhere. But without their work, uh, we just would not be able to do the things that we've been doing. Uh, wanted to also congratulate everybody for a great homecoming week. It's really neat to live in a town where the entire community can celebrate together. There are a lot of people who put in a lot of work to make sure that that event uh, and that week goes well for our students. And I wanna thank all those folks. And lastly, I wanna thank our students. Uh, we talk about students all the time. There are a couple that said they were radically uh, supportive of students. I know Mrs. Slosson started out by talking about uh, keeping students at the center of what we do. Um, our students inspire us, they center us, and they provide us with the motivation to do the things that we do. And so I just wanted to thank them for uh, for giving us the motivation that they do.
Love it. Speaking of students, Allison, you wanna go next?
So I just wanna first and foremost wish a belated happy Rosh Hashanah to anyone who celebrates. Uh, again, homecoming was on Saturday, the twenty-fourth. So a huge thank you to the high school student council and to their coordinator Lori Dawson for setting that up. Uh, as a student, it was amazing. There were heaters this year, which is really great because it was outside and it was very cold. Um, and also the skyline game was on Friday and in, in polite terms, we kicked butt, so good job, Saleen. And so I, once again, this has been uh, repeated a few times, and I'll just reiterate that the election is on November eighth, including our own bond proposal and other city elections. So just something to keep your mind out, mind on. And then there is a trick-or-treat at Rolling Hills on October first. So if you or any of your kids wanna go and have fun at that, that would be great. And then there is the Chad Tough Run on October first, which will be really fun. There's a five K and there's a one mile. And then finally, just something in the future, there is a, gonna be a blood drive at the high school in late October. So just something to keep your eye out for.
Thanks Allison. Trustees?
Sure.
Susan?
I just have a quick one. Um, so I just wanted to, to um, acknowledge that um, it's National Hispanic Heritage Month. And um, I hope in the schools that um, they're honoring and um, uh, talking about um, you know, uh, Hispanic heritage and celebrating.
Uh, I, I was going to also mention homecoming and uh, and just what a, what a great time and great event that was. And especially um, thanking Lori Dawson for the um, fewer hours of sleep that she has been allocated over the last couple of weeks as she works with her team to um, just make sure that every detail is, is um, is accounted for. So I know, I appreciated it this year um, as the parent of um, a homecoming representative for the junior class. So that was a lot of fun and uh, she had us right where we needed to be so that we didn't embarrass ourselves. So that was great, thanks Lori. Um, and speaking of students, um, in addition to our uh, Science Olympia students who were here earlier today, we also have some um, students from the AP Gov class because they're um, coming to witness um, government in, in, um, in real time. So uh, thanks for coming tonight and bring your friends, we like having you here. And if you wanna say anything, we're gonna have another public comment here in a minute. So you can get a form from Betty in the back. Yeah, so, and, and uh, just echoing to just the hours that our staff is putting in to make sure that things run seamlessly. And that transportation piece, I know, has been a worry for a long time and um, continues to be. And the um, the sacrifice that others are making is, is not unnoticed, so thank you.
I do have a quick one. I was at an event a week or two ago and I was pulled to the side by Michelle Anzaldi. She's the township clerk for Pittsfield and she wanted to pass along her profound thanks for allowing us to use part of the high school for voting on Election Day. I didn't realize it was such a big issue to find real estate, but uh, they are, they are truly, truly grateful. And I just wanted to make sure that you heard that message.
Uh, I have a couple of recognitions too as well. Having a freshman now, homecoming was a whole new ballgame. And uh, I just wanna thank everybody who's involved with that. Uh, there's a couple of other things. Uh, our board forums that re, that occurred recently. I, I wanna give a shout out to the, to the, to those who participated and to our student leaders who led it, right? They were prepared, they were professional, like they looked the part. Like they, literally, I thought like I was watching it like on TV and it was a professional, you know, setup. So I was really proud of them and they should be patted on the back for that. And then the last thing I wanna do is I wanna thank anybody and everybody who is involved with the uh, memorial and remembrance of, of Mrs. Beasley. Uh, that was, it was well done. It was, it paid tribute to, to her life and her commitment to students. And I was, I was really happy about, you know, one of the things I think that came through is, we came through as a place that really does care about its employees, cares about, you know, it's, it's the, the people in the community and, and there were a lot of people that came together that day to do that. So I uh, I am thankful to anyone who had any part of that.
Um, I'll just layer in gratitude for homecoming. It felt really great to come together as a community. Um, with regards to the candidate forum, I first wanted to thank the candidates because I know how hard it is to put yourself out there in a public forum like that. And, and we should not discount people who put themselves forward to help kids. Um, whether we agree or disagree on, on anything, we all agree that that's a, a, a challenge to put yourself out there. So thank you very much for doing that. Um, also, the students were absolutely amazing and I also would like to acknowledge Ben and Anna and, and every, all of the work that went into that. So thank you, it's incredibly important in, in these times of social media. It's incredibly important to give people space to, to hear their own voices. And um, hopefully folks can engage with each of them after this, so thank you very much. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the minutes for this meeting. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize the listed items as part of the consent agenda.
Um, I would like to pull one of the items.
Okay, Susan, which one?
For discussion. Um, so D, receive and file finance and human resources reports.
Okay. So we are pulling that uh, temporarily from the consent agenda, maybe putting it back. So did you wanna open up discussion?
Yes, I um, just had a question about um, the papers that were put on. Um, and there was an addition to the human resources, um, someone resigning and then um, a recommendation of hiring someone. So I just wanted...
so I just wanted more information about that.
Sure. We did receive a resignation from a teacher at the middle school over the weekend, it was one that we weren't necessarily anticipating. We were very fortunate in the sense that we have an individual who has applied previously in the district, that's very highly thought of in the district, that had expressed interest previously, and so once we became aware of this vacancy, we did go ahead and contact that individual, and that person is interested in joining Selenary Schools. It just so happened that this happened Friday after the, the, I'm sorry, the weekend after the HR report had been submitted. Because of timing, this individual was reluctant to resign from their current position until the board approved, that's why I submitted this as a, an addendum, if you will, or an update, because we would like to have that person give their notice today so they can be with our students as soon as possible.
Susan, any follow-up, or any other trustees have any questions or comments for Kurt?
I have a procedural question, but let's continue to deal with this first.
Susan, did you have any follow-up? No, okay, yeah, go ahead.
So when we pull an item off, one of the things that I noted, did, the last time that we had a discussion about the possibility of pulling one off, and we did not, are we officially, did we, so if we just officially pulled this off, do we now have to like wait a, a cycle, wait a meeting to be able to approve the personnel report? Because I don't want this person to have to wait two weeks to have to be in the classroom.
Yeah, Su- Susan, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just going to refer to the, looking at the policy 0166.1 about the consent agenda, so a board member can request an item to be removed and defer it for a specific action and more discussion, no vote needed, right? So it should be relocated as an action item eligible for discussion, so then I, it would not go back into the consent because it was, it's a separate like discussion item.
We can deal with it now.
Yes.
We can deal with it now, if, if there's a motion made in a second.
That's procedure, or that, that's policy.
Well, then I motion to approve the HR report as presented.
Second, support, Miller. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. So moving back to the consent agenda, and I won't read, read the paragraph again, I would like to please entertain a motion to authorize the following listed items as part of the consent agenda, and this will be items A, B, and C only.
So moved, McFay.
Michael, thank you.
Support, Miller.
Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Item scheduled on our next agenda. Kurt?
I believe you'll have a bi-weekly update on the bond, and other than that, I don't know that there are any, any scheduled reports at this time.
All right, we had been talking maybe about teaching and learning and having Kara up here, and Allison, I think you're really starting to dig into the student showcases, so we look forward to hearing what you bring up the next time. This is our second opportunity for public comment. Betty, thank you. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Oh, and there is a spider walking across the desk, right?[1623.11][1623.11](Laughter) We had a cricket last week, so. Mr. Burnett, parent, whenever you're ready, you can just toggle the, the light to green, and you're ready to go. Treasurer Gerby has the yellow card when you're 30 seconds out, and then when he'll show the red card, the three minutes is up, so you can just complete your thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, thanks for letting me talk. I'm glad to hear that Hispanic History Month was mentioned. I think it's important that we highlight all our culture, I mean, the US is wonderful in that, I mean, being Hispanic, I mean, that's near and dear to me to hear that, so I'll take it one step further, and we should celebrate every culture, so I mean, if we could do something to celebrate all, that would be awesome. I also want to highlight that a lot of the people running are running on bringing the community together, and I think that's wonderful. In the past two years, I've seen some division, and of course, wonderful as this district is, that really takes away from it to, to just look at it in the lens that if, if all you looked at board meetings, you wouldn't realize that the school's doing so wonderfully. So when I hear disparaging comments in a board meeting as it was a throw punch and it was a classic, it's very disheartening to not hear it denounced. So I'm really hopeful that there's the turning of a leaf and we, we can just come closer together, and that's all I have to say, so, other than, this is a wonderful district, and I really hope that people can come together in the board to hear everybody's voice, and that will go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback, Mr. Burnett. Our next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on October 14th, 2022, here at 6:30 PM. I'd like to now please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of September 27th, 2022, at 8:05 PM.
Motion, Gerby.
Brad, thank you.
Happy 50th.
Thank you, dear.
Happy birthday to President Stephen.
Thank you for that. Second, support, Jenny, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. We are adjourned, so I can go eat cake? Thank you.